I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item?
Roll call, Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton is absent. Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slowey.
Present.
And Mayor Bruins.
Present.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is captioned and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Sunday, April 28th at 8:00 PM and again on Monday, April 29th at 9:00 AM on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Okay, thank you very much. And our next item, please.
Approval of agenda.
Do we have any questions on the agenda?
Move approval. Second.
All in favor, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Carrie's.
Next item is presentation number four, a proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month.
Okay, and do we have someone from staff making a presentation on this?
We do have a representative from Sacramento Self-Help Housing, John Foley, who will be accepting the proclamation.
All right. Hi, John, nice to see you.
Good to see you, thank you.
Did you want to make a statement or shall I just go into the proclamation?
What do you think I'm going to say when you say that?
Of course you do.
We talk sometimes about the work that our outreach navigator does, you know, with folks that are on the street. And last time I was here, I talked a little bit about the Render's Helpline where we take calls from tenants here in town, where having some challenge with their landlords. But tonight, I just want to take a minute to describe a few of the situations that have come up over the last couple of months where we had to involve the attorneys that we bring in from Project Sentinel where there's something legal. And I bring them up because they're not necessarily things you would think of. Like, we had a tenant that had a mobility issue, you know, just couldn't move around very much. And so she asked for an accommodation to have a parking spot closer to her apartment. And the first reaction was actually to move her to a parking spot that was further away. I don't know why that would have been the first thing they did. So eventually, you know, we got that worked out. But those kind of things are, I don't know, maybe it's landlords that aren't used to being landlords or something, but just not sensitive to it. We had another one where a tenant had a daughter come visit with her for a couple of days. Daughter's mentally ill and was, got off her medication and had some kind of an outburst at the apartment. And, I mean, law enforcement, I mean, your police officers had to come. It was significant. And the tenant, the mom, was given a three-day notice because she was maintaining a nuisance. And I think we've gotten it resolved, but I'm not sure it's totally squared away yet. And it's just, you know, that kind of lack of sensitivity is actually illegal, you know, so it takes some work. The other one I wanted to mention was a tenant who was actually staying with somebody, you know, sort of like a subtenant in a duplex. And when the master tenant moved on, she asked the landlord if she could then become the master tenant and rent the place. And the landlord said part of our normal procedure is to get a social security number when we rent. And of course, it's illegal to have a requirement that you give, have to give a social security number. And so we had to educate the landlord on that. So those kind of things have happened just in the last six weeks here in town where, you know, we had to intervene to, you know, protect the tenant from, you know, that kind of activity. And I just appreciate your support that we're able to, you know, bring in fair housing attorneys to help people and to keep an eye on things. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And my question to you is, do you think most of these issues come up out of ignorance rather than maliciousness, or do you see it all over the board?
Well, I've been around enough to know there are people who are malicious, so I'm not saying that doesn't happen. But I do think that folks, and you and I also know people who rent out property who were stressed and pushed and have bad problems with troublesome tenants and get frustrated and all that kind of thing. But I think most of this, yeah, is a matter of people not recognizing the full range of responsibilities they have when they take on rental property.
Yeah.
And, I mean, certainly that's what, you know, Jim Lofkin from the Apartment Health Association always points out, that he wishes we could get more people into the education that they do to really understand what that responsibility is. And he always wishes that people who really shouldn't take it on would just not buy property and let people who are prepared for that level of responsibility take it on. You know, it's such a big deal, of course, I mean, when you're the landlord, you have so much more power than the tenant does. And when people have power, you want to make sure they really understand that there need to be limits to that power and that they be respectful of the rights that the tenant has.
Well, thank you for that. And so I'm just going to read this proclamation from here and then I'll come down and present it to you.
Okay, thank you.
So, April is Fair Housing Month.
Yes.
And so we're here to honor that today. Commemorates the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, where the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, or financing of dwellings in other housing-related transactions based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, and disability. And whereas Fair Housing Month is timely and that we reflect on the importance in our communities, states, and the nations to affirm civil rights, oppose bigotry, and discrimination. And whereas the city of Citrus Heights affirms that every American in choosing where they want to live has a right to live in dignity and safety without fear of discrimination and that the city supports state and federal protections against discrimination in the sale and rental of housing. And so the city of Citrus Heights supports the education of homeowners, realtors, landlords, property managers, homebuyers, and tenants regarding their rights and responsibilities under federal and state housing laws. And whereas the city of Citrus Heights is proud of its commitment to fair housing while recognizing the need to affirmatively further fair housing in its policies and practices, and we're committed to continuing to work to identify and improve impediments to fair housing choices. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Fair Housing Month and confirms its commitment to ensure there are equal access to housing for every member of our community.
Thank you.
That's our commitment to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thanks very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
And our next presentation, number five, is a proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming May as Building Safety Month. And Chief Building Official Greg Anderson will be accepting the proclamation.
Hello, Greg.
Good evening. Hi, Chief Building Official Anderson. The mayor's asked me to present this proclamation, and I guess going with the last proclamation, would you like to say anything before I delve into the proclamation?
Actually, if you could read the proclamation first, I would kind of lead the way.
Oh, perfect, okay. Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, and our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our communities achieved through devotions of vigilant guardians like yourself, building, safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and electricians, it wasn't on here, I had to throw that in, and others in the constructing industry. And they work year-round to ensure the safe construction of our buildings. And these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a United States-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, work, and play. And whereas no code, no confidence, the theme of Building Safety Month for 2019 encourages all of us Americans to raise awareness of the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure the safety of our built environment and recognizes the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and businesses. And each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting our lives and our property. So now, therefore, the City Council of the city of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim next month, May 2019, as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, we encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. And it's signed by our mayor, Jeanne Bruins, and attested by Amy Van. And now, if you'd like to say something, I'll bring it down to you.
All right. Thank you very much, Greg Anderson, Chief Building Official. Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. Once again, I'd like to thank you very much for your support for building safety. Building safety is, as you can tell, it's pretty involved. This is an international awareness program and campaign. So, we're going to be kicking off, our building division will be kicking off Building Safety Month on April 31st here in City Hall. It'll be approximately around 11 o'clock. And we will have our displays and handouts, a lot of building safety tips, things of that nature, that will be within the building division in City Hall. And I believe we're going to have some light refreshments. So that'll be kicking it off. We're going to have a lot of outreach programs that we're going to be doing this year. Some of the things we're going to be doing is presenting to our neighborhood associations. We'll probably be going back to some of our elementary schools and doing a presentation on building safety there as well. One of the big things that's happened this year is Home Depot has actually partnered, they're one of the bigger sponsors, with ICC promoting Building Safety Month this year. So, building officials, building officials and code officials around the country are going to be actually partnering with Home Depot, setting up booths within the different stores across the country and promoting building safety and giving informational handouts, answering questions anybody may have about permits or their projects. So with that, we're going to be getting that information on our city social media, Twitter and Facebook. Hopefully, we'll get the dates out there when we have events coming up. And we'll get some pictures and stuff of the events as they go on. And we'll be doing some promotions on our social media as well for that. So I'd like to welcome everybody to come down to City Hall during the month of May. We'll have our handouts and information. You're welcome to come talk to the building staff with any information or any questions you may have about your projects. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
And we always enjoy May being Building Safety Month, and I'm looking forward to what you have to offer this year.
Okay, our next item, please.
Next presentation, number six, 2019 Dispatcher of the Year presentation.
Mayor Bruins, members of the council, I have the pleasure of recognizing our Citrus Heights Police Department dispatchers and to recognize one individual for their outstanding contributions. Every year, we recognize the men and women who served as public safety dispatchers during National Telecommunicators Week, celebrated during the second week of April. Since 1981, the Association of Public Safety Telecommunications has celebrated public safety dispatchers during this week, and the US Congress made a formal proclamation recognizing National Telecommunicators Week in the 1990s. During this time, we celebrate all of our professional dispatchers, and we also seek to distinguish one dispatcher who stood out and is deserving of special recognition, although each of our dispatchers are dedicated professionals worthy of our gratitude. And this year, it's my pleasure to introduce and announce Citrus Heights Police Dispatcher Scott Kirmgard as our 2018 Dispatcher of the Year. Scott, if you will join me up here. Scott was formally recognized on Saturday, April 6th, during the Regional Organizational Public Safety Telecommunications Association banquet for his exemplary performance and contributions to our community. Each year, many CHPD dispatchers are nominated for this annual award, and this year, Scott was selected as our award recipient. Scott joined CHPD Communications Team shortly after the inception of CHPD in 2006. During his tenure, Scott has served in a variety of training and leadership roles and has looked upon as a veteran member and a mentor of our team. One particular call this past year highlights the truly skilled professionalism that Scott displays. On December 27th, 2018, Scott received a frantic 911 call from a woman who had just been struck by a drunk driver while she was riding her skateboard within our city. Scott remained on the 911 line with the victim for over 20 minutes while he, his partners, and responding officers attempted to identify the caller's location. During that time, Scott demonstrated incredible calm, compassion, and encouragement to the victim, and the victim was later successfully located and transported to the hospital with critical injuries. For many, the story might end there, but not for Scott. He and his partners would later visit the victim in the hospital and show their care and concern towards the victims in the community we serve. The above example is just one of the many reasons Scott is deserving of this award and recognition. In department-wide nominations, he was recognized for his consistency, reliability, expertise, professionalism, and compassion. Scott is a consummate professional and has earned this award for his ongoing compassion in representing the dispatcher profession. Scott, I am truly honored to publicly congratulate you and express how lucky we are to have you as a member of our team. Congratulations.
Scott, before you sit down, just on behalf of the city council, I want to thank you. That became a very well-known and famous local incident that had far-reaching circumstances, and I just want to thank you for being the one that took the call and no doubt went a long way to help saving this woman's life, so thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Scott, thank you. You have the hardest job in law enforcement, without a doubt, in my mind. You know, you take 911 calls like that, you have to dispatch officers into dangerous situations and not know what they're facing when the silence occurs. You have to deal with the mic clicks occasionally. And I did that job for a couple of weeks in my lifetime, and I would never do it again. It is the hardest job in law enforcement, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. All right. Well, that ends our presentations on a very high note, and so I would like to move on. Next item, please.
Comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Jeanne. Didn't have any regional transit or STA meetings since our last council meeting. Did attend the strategic retreat planning session yesterday with the rest of the council. And then the only other thing I had is tomorrow, Big Lots is having their grand open ribbing cutting, even though they're already open, but that'll be at 8:30 in the morning. And that's all I have for tonight.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Daniels.
Thank you. Airboard meeting this morning, not a whole lot going on, really. Did get a proposed budget and fee schedule for next year of about $65 million, so be rest assured, lots of money being spent on cleaning your air. And it does include a 3.6% desire to raise permit fees. So, lots of money being spent. On the other notes, the Taste of Citrus Heights is tomorrow at 6:00 PM. And if you have not been to this event, you've really missed out. I would highly, highly, highly recommend to see if there's tickets available and to attend the event. Lots of good food, beverages, and a good time. On May 2nd is the big day of giving, and I just would encourage everybody to look inside their hearts, find something to do with either your time, your talent, or your treasure, and reach out and help a charitable organization. Just take at least one day, if you don't do anything all year long, and do that, and that would be wonderful. And then finally, also, May 2nd is the Sacramento Police Sheriff Memorial Annual Remembrance Ceremony. And it is Thursday, May 2nd at 12:00 noon at Wood Lake Park on Arden Way. We have already lost, as a nation, approximately, I think it's near 35 officers this year. And so honoring our officers is a very good thing to do, and this is one way of do it, to do it, and so I encourage you to attend. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Slowey?
Yeah, not a lot to report, you guys covered most of it, but Amy, I did ask, Rifka Sass from the executive director of the library to get in touch with you and come before us on the council meeting in the near future to give us an update on Sylvan Library. For any of you who don't know, that library's been closed now for a couple of months, it's been going through a renovation. And to give us an update of exactly what they're doing when it's going to come back open. So, she'll be getting in touch with you if you would work with her on that, please. That's it.
Okay, very good. So I just have a couple of things. First of all, we had our semi-annual strategic planning retreat yesterday where the city council and our executive staff and city attorney get together, and we take a look at our strengths and our weaknesses, our threats, and our opportunities. And so we take a look back six months, a look forward six months, and we reaffirm our priorities, our mission statement, and our vision statement. So one of the fun exercises is to come up with as many positive things as we can that we can remember that happened in the city in the last six months. And this time, we came up with 66 different projects, events, and opportunities that we realized. And so our entire planning session report has been uploaded to our website, so I would encourage the public to take a look at it because we took an honest look at our weaknesses and our threats, as well as our opportunities and our strengths. And just, we've been doing this every six months since we became a city, and it's in large part the reason we're able to stay so closely on track and to realize the successes that we've realized over the last 20-some, 22 years. Okay. And so as a result of the strategic planning retreat yesterday, I was unable to attend the sanitation board meeting, so I have no report there. One other upcoming meeting, or upcoming event we have, starting the weekend of May 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and then the following weekend of May 10th, 11th, and 12th, is our Citrus Heights Community Marching Band Semi-Annual Gigantic Yard Sale. And they made a presentation during our workshop today, a very short presentation, because we do help fund that band through the city, but I'd say 95% of what they need to operate, they raise themselves, and in large part through these huge garage sales, yard sales. So, this is their flyer, you'll see it on our city's website, and they have more stuff probably than they can, they're busting at the seams. They have some really good things in their sale, so help support the band in that way and see if you find a treasure you just can't live without. It's at their home, the Cook's Home at 7620 Linden Avenue in Citrus Heights, and that's between Mariposa and Auburn, north of Antelope, north of Twin Oaks, actually. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is our new Economic Development Director, Megan Huber, has designed a really nice little card that I'm going to get a supply of, and, you know, it tells statistics about our city. It is a very engaging card, and it's being used to encourage new businesses to come here. But there's also a lot of interesting facts in here, such as our median age is 37.5, and I'm just slightly older than that, so. Our population is top 88,000, so our city is relatively stable in those regards, but it's fun to see who we are and what we're all about in print. So I commend her for that, and it's just one of the several tools that she's developed since she's been here. Okay, I think that's it for me. Let's go on to the next second item, please.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before the council's consideration. And if you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. Any public comments beyond the 30 minutes may be heard at the end of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Okay, thank you. We have just one speaker sheet this evening, and that would be Janice J. Cox, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening, council. I made, I wrote up some nice notes at home, proceeded to leave them at home, but it's just as well.
You'll be fine.
I'm having ocular migraine right now, so I can't even see you people. But I'm bringing up the lot in front of Walmart, which, the lot that years ago was going to be more fresh and easy, that lot. Costco, not so much, but Walmart gets a lot of pedestrian traffic. Plus, people from the schools and Sylvan Corners and all that area walk through there to get to the nature area, to get over here, to get to the park, to get to City Hall, to get to the post office. About a month or so, maybe two months ago, a beautiful rail fence went around that lot.
Pardon me for interrupting you. Catherine, there's someone here to see you. I'm so sorry.
A really nice-looking rail fence went around that lot. It went around that lot from corner to corner, including right on the pavement, so it's right next to the cars. There's no place to walk. The first time I saw it, I was walking around, actually, to go to the nature area. And I made my way along, it's very scary walking along that two-way road into Walmart. It's, and you're right on the pavement, there's no place to go, there's not even six inches to walk. And I saw, well, I'm kind of old myself, but an elderly lady actually climbing over the rail fence because she was afraid to walk. So today, before I came to city council, I decided to drive around there to see if anything had happened, and it looks like a lot of people may be homeless, I'm not sure, going to self-help because they're starting to tear the fence down. There's two big holes, there's a nice gate, but the gate's locked. I came about a month ago and talked to a city staffer, and his manager was in a meeting, but he guessed, he surmised, that that was put up by people that are going to be building, and it was going to be a staging area for equipment, and that's why they put the fence in. And my concern was, just putting the fence in even three feet away from the roadway would make it safe, because there are children, there are people with strollers, there are homeless, there are elderly people that walk through there every day, and there is no place to walk. And if you look, the staffer, I didn't catch, I'm sorry I didn't catch his name, but he actually brought it up Google Map, you know, as I was sitting at the counter out here. And he looked down at it, and you could actually see the trails that people had, you know, this been there for years and years. It's been a walkway for years and years and years. And now there is no place to walk, except that the corner, right at the turn, right as you're going into Walmart, somebody has knocked down about nine of the boards right there. So it looks, now it looks terrible. At least it's safer to walk now, because you can cut through the boards. But I mean, if it is, the staffer did not think it was city that put it up, he thought it was construction people.
Probably.
That put up for staging. But if so, just moving it over three feet. Because I know if they're going to eventually have to rebuild it, if they're going to put equipment in there.
Right. We appreciate you bringing that forward and...
It's extremely dangerous.
Okay, and we'll have one of our staff members look into it and talk to the...
The only other way to get back there is to walk all the way up to Applebee's.
Right. I know the area, so thank you very much for bringing it forward, Janice. All right. I have no other speaker sheets, so we're going to close public comment and go on to our next item.
The next item is consent calendar items seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 for council consideration.
Okay, and then we have a request from Councilmember Miller to pull item 11.
Pull number eight, please.
And to pull eight... And to pull eight by Councilmember Daniels. So we're going to look at 7, 9, 10, and 12.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Okay, would you please reuse item eight?
So, item eight, the subject is agreement with Sunrise Recreation Park District for supplemental police services.
Okay. Do you want to pose your question, or you want a presentation?
I don't need a big staff report at all. If we could just kind of give a very, very short, concise overview of what this item is about, so the public knows what we'll be doing.
Sure.
And then I have some questions.
Okay. The Sunrise Recreation and Parks District has requested a new, renewed the existing contract for supplemental police services with the Citrus Heights Police Department. The Police Department and the Sunrise Recreation Parks District have reached an agreement that would enhance safety in and around the parks and open spaces in the city. So staff has written a staff report and a resolution. We recommend city council approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement between the city and Sunrise Parks District for supplemental law enforcement services in and around the parks located within our city.
And the amount of time that they're contracting for, is it 40 hours a month? Is that what I remember?
That's correct.
And then the billing rate is $95 an hour?
Up to.
Up to $95 an hour. And can I get just a very general breakdown? I don't need necessarily numbers of, how do we get to $95 an hour in what we charge for our service there?
Well, that would include, and that would be a maximum cost, we only charge the actual cost to the park district. That includes officer or sergeant rate at overtime, so it's time and a half, and plus other ancillary costs for a vehicle, fuel, mileage, training, administrative costs such as citations, that type of thing. So an overtime rate for an officer and a sergeant, plus those things, could be up to and including $95 an hour, but it's usually less than that. It's just the actual cost.
So a couple of things. I want the public to know and understand that we do work with the park district to have an officer in our parks. Obviously, the hours aren't great, but it's something. And so we are out there, we will have officers out there, they'll be available, and they'll be present, they'll create a presence, and that's, I think, a very good thing. And on the billing rate, I want to make sure that people understand that it is not our desire, maybe that's not the right word, but it's not our fault that we have to charge a time-and-a-half rate for this function. It's not considered a normal officer-staffing type of situation. This is on their time off. This would be an officer on their time off, working what we call an off-duty job, correct?
Yes, and that amount does not anywhere near cover the cost of a full-time police officer.
And, correct, yeah. And so it does put an officer out there, and that's a good thing. It does put money towards an officer, and that's a good thing. And obviously, it doesn't cover, you know, the entire cost of a full-time officer, because it's basically a .25 officer at this juncture. But perhaps next year, as we look to do, one of the things that we have a goal in our city to do, which is to expand our law enforcement functions, I would just ask that we maybe look at this and examine a way to maybe take this funding that the park district, I think, would continue to do, possibly even increase somewhat if we can give them a much more enhanced level of service than 40 hours a week, and instead give them 40 hours, excuse me, 40 hours a month, but instead give them 40 hours a week, that we put money towards an officer to do that, and that we might look for other funding to do that also. And then we come up with an officer that costs us a whole lot less than what a normal, regular officer would cost us, because we're sharing in the cost. So I know that's money and whatnot, but it's a pretty good bang for the buck when we can throw in what would be approximately $50,000 towards having one of our officers. And with the growing concerns of people, and as the father of a two-year-old, literally not even wanting to take my child to the park anymore because of the problems that we see in parks, hopefully maybe changing that perception, that it is a safer place that you can take your children to. So just something to think about, as I'm sure they'll continue it next year. And then the other thing is, hoping maybe this also gives us an opportunity to utilize our drone program. And I know that depends on, you know, if one of the officers that signs up to work this assignment is one of your pilots, too. But maybe a good way to use our drone, because some of the parks, Rush Park, obviously, very large, Temple Park, very large, and to be able to get out and walk these areas, it's going to take a lot of time, it's going to take a lot of that shift. And so, just again, maybe something to think about, hopefully, as we move forward. More than anything, I want the community to know that we are going to be out there and available.
Well, you mentioned the small unmanned aerial systems vehicles.
I know I'm not supposed to say drone.
We also are in the process of installing pods or police observation cameras, and that was funded by the park district, so that we'll have access to make sure that we provide security that way as well.
Can an officer have that available to him live, on a phone, through his phone, or anything like that?
It'll be primarily through dispatch.
Okay, thanks. That's it. I would move the item.
Second.
We moved a second to approve consent item eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Item 11, please.
Item 11, the subject is Senate Bill 1, Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Funding and Project List for Fiscal Year 1920.
Yeah, and I just asked Regina if she would list the streets for next year's paving. It looks like a lot more streets than I've seen in many a year, mainly due to the SB1 funding we're getting. And these will be resurfaced, and estimated useful life after that is 30 years.
Correct.
So...
So before you, this is a requirement that was, when SB1 was enacted in 2017, and with the voters selecting to keep SB1 enacted at this last year's election as a means of demonstrating transparency and accountability to the voters, this is a requirement every year that we have to go before our councils or our boards and receive approval on what our anticipated expenditures will be for the subsequent year of distribution of funds. And so as not to delay on those distributions, we do receive them every month, and so to make sure that we don't, aren't delayed in those distributions, starting July 1. We have this item before you this evening. To note that these, the list that is on the staff report and within the resolution, they are listed in alphabetical, they are not by PCI or Payment Condition Index. However, for your knowledge, the PCI is right around 28 to 30 for these streets that are listed on here. That's our figure. But again, we are planning on updating our Payment Condition Index within this next couple of months, and so therefore we'll have better numbers in the future when we do bring them to council. So the streets that are listed here, Councilmember Miller said that there's a lot more streets than what we have done in the past. It's the same amount of streets as last year, but far more than what we've done in previous years. Again, because of SB1 funding at about a million and a half a year, it's affording us to do about twice as many as we have been doing for the last several years. So we have Blowing Wind Way from Big Arrow to Flaming Arrow Drive, Carroll Avenue from Scribner to Cedar, Celestial Way from Capricorn to the End of the Court, Covewood Court from Brockwood to the cul-de-sac, Creekmont Way from Starflower to Sunwood, Flaming Arrow Drive from Verner to Indian River, Forbes Way from Stacy Hills to Poppy Field, Glass Slipper from Midnight to Carriage, Hatfield from Beckwith to the cul-de-sac, Maidstone from Bartig to Fleetwood Drive, Picnic Court from Gumwood to the cul-de-sac, Scribner Avenue from Holly to Carroll, and Sudden Wind from Broken Bow to the End. And these streets are all throughout the city, touching on many of the neighborhood associations, so they're not concentrated all within one area.
But these are basically the ones in the worst condition?
Correct. The Payment Condition Index is 1 to 100, with 0 to 24 being very poor, and 25 to 49 being poor. So they definitely fall within the poor to very poor range.
And this is, this isn't just all we're doing, because this is in addition to the work we're doing on the major arterials?
Correct. What we had discussed with council last year when we talked about SB1, and we are looking to continue this for the next couple of years with the SB1 funds, is that to focus our efforts on residential streets, because these are local monies, and we will still continue to look for grant opportunities to leverage local funds to address our arterial streets with some of our complete streets projects.
Okay. Thanks, Regina.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll move the item then. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 11. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Next item, please.
Next item, public hearings are none. Next item, regular calendar, item number 13. The subject is Hazardous Materials Response Teams Agreement with the County of Sacramento. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting an agreement with County of Sacramento for hazardous material response team services.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm Gina Anderson. I'm your Assistant Chief of Police. I'm here this evening to recommend that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the County of Sacramento for hazardous materials team response services. With me is Captain Daniel Hoy. He's the Hazardous Materials Program Manager for the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District, and also here this evening with Metro Fire is Special Operations Battalion Chief Chris Green. The management and control of responses to emergencies involving hazardous materials requires specialized training, equipment, and supplies in order to provide adequate protection for the health and the safety of our public and our emergency personnel. The City of Sacramento and Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District have hazardous materials response teams with the necessary equipment and training. The city has contracted with the county for hazardous materials response teams since 2006, and so this contract is for the continuation of those services. The contract is a three-year contract with the option for two one-year extensions, and the services include hazmat team response to emergency situations involving Level 2 and Level 3 hazardous materials incidents. The hazmat team will provide an assessment of the scene in order to classify the level of the incident and the need for resources, and if necessary, rescue victims. They will identify the types and quantities of hazardous materials and determine if they are a hazard to the environment, to property, and will provide advice regarding measures to mitigate, contain, and suppress the hazardous material incident. They'll extinguish fires, and they will provide technical advice and assistance in managing the incident, and will coordinate emergency responses for cleanup and restoration of the affected sites. The fiscal impact, as included in the staff report, the service agreement for fiscal year 2018, 2019 is $59,771.74. That amount was included in our 2018, 2019 budget. The contract amount increases at 3% per year, and if the two one-year extensions are executed, will end in fiscal year 2022, 2023, at a cost of $67,273.63. So I'm going to turn over this presentation now to Captain Hoy to discuss the hazmat response team's capabilities and responses to incidents in Citrus Heights.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Happy to be here tonight. I just want to give you the opportunity to have a brief overview of what we provide as the hazardous materials response team, noting that this is a separate specialty from what we already provide in terms of fire, structure fire response, suppression, emergency medical services. So when I talk hazardous materials, we're talking about anything that fits into a category of something that might be hazardous. Now, really, hazard is dependent on the dose, but these are some of the hazards that are common in the public sector today, and that we have the ability to both identify and to mitigate. So the way that hazardous materials incidents basically run is, much of the time, we're not dealing with something that we know. So we're dealing with unknowns. And one of the largest problems is transportation, not only within the county, but within the city of Citrus Heights and the surrounding municipalities. That is the largest challenge that we face, is finding out what something is. Once we can find out what it is, we can figure out what the hazards are, and then find out if it poses a hazard to the public and to the environment, and we figure out how we're going to clean it up and dispose of it properly. There is a mandate by federal and state government that requires cradle-to-grave tracking of all hazardous materials, so finding it out, finding out what it is and identifying it is a huge part of what we do. Just to give you a brief overview of our team, we're a Type 1 team that's recognized by Cal OES. It includes a weapons-of-mass destruction component. Our team is staffed with seven hazardous materials specialists on any given day. That's 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Like I mentioned before, the challenge is figuring out what unknown substances are, so we are able to do field testing for definitive determinations on what substances are. We can do air monitoring, that it can help us establish exclusion zones to be able to keep the public safe while incidents are ongoing. We can enter in wearing specific protective clothing so that we can mitigate these hazards, again, in the interest of safety. Some of the technology that we use, we are able to use active maps, such as Google, and interface them with some of our programs to give us map overlays, not only to show us where the hazard is, but given current weather conditions, where it will go, and what parts of the community it will impact. This will help us determine our protective actions. Do we shelter people in place? Do we do evacuations, and such? And then we do various different intervention techniques, plugging, patching, neutralization for caustics and corrosives like acids and bases, and then finally, decontamination. Like the chief mentioned here, there are basically three levels of hazardous materials response we go on. Level 1 would be a basic response that's handled by one of our own engine companies. It's the level on 2 and 3 hazardous materials responses that was mentioned specifically in the agreement that require a hazardous materials response team. And again, we need more technical expertise for these incidents. There are more municipalities, more players, if you will, involved in these types of responses. They may involve civilian evacuations or protective actions, and could, based on the material, could result in injuries and/or deaths. So again, a Level 1 is something that can be handled very easily with just one company of responders, firefighters and paramedics. Level 2 is where we start to respond, is when we need to evacuate. That the, if the hazard is so great that the public is at risk, we would be able to, again, use our technology to say what area is safe and what is not, so that we can shelter people in place or evacuate as necessary. And then, believe it or not, there are fires, other than structure fires, that involve hazardous materials that need specialized tools or specialized extinguishing agents that we carry as a team, that we can help mitigate and put those fires out. And then the highest level, Level 3, if you look at the picture there, it's, obviously it's not from locally, but an example of a Level 3 would be a large chemical release, such as a train derailment, a large gasoline taker overturn, any other large chemical release that would result in a harmful vapor cloud, such as chlorine or ammonia, which are very common in society and on the road. So like I mentioned before, we're staffed with seven specialists, and managed by myself, who not only works a normal schedule as all the firefighters in my department, but also I'm on-call 24/7 to lend technical assistance. So what do we go through to be able to provide this service and be trained? I really want you to know where your finances are being spent. And every one of our team members is certified to the specialist level, which is six weeks of training. That's six weeks, 40 hours each week, and also refresher training 24 hours a year. The state and federal law requires that we demonstrate competency every year and undergo medical monitoring. And that's all found in 29 CFR 1910-120 and Title 8 of 5192 of the California Code of So and as I mentioned before, the releases can really happen anywhere. Here in Citrus Heights, you have some fixed facilities that I'll talk about a little bit later, as I start to wrap up here. The big problem that I see in your specific municipality and here in Citrus Heights is the transportation. We, every day, trucks go down the road, they may... They may be regulated, they may not be regulated, but they're carrying hazardous materials, and we don't necessarily know what they are at all times. But you also have fixed facilities and other things that can generate spills and releases. So how is this applicable to you? Currently, the City of Citrus Heights has 179 hazardous materials users on file with the County of Sacramento. This ranges from commercial retails, such as Walmart, Costco, that carry your general household flammable, corrosives, poisons, things like that. You also have a number of water treatment facilities, of which chlorine is the primary chemical that is used to treat water, and that is a risk factor as well. And then you do have an industrial gas facility up on Sylvan as it gets towards Riverside on the left there, just before the freeway, that has a number of gases as well. So there is some potential. The good thing is that there's a lot of engineering controls in place with fire codes and with regulations that are meant to keep those things from escaping their containers, but when we introduce the human element, some things just happened. Like I said, the larger potential that we usually tend to overlook sometimes is transportation. So what's happened in City of Citrus Heights? Our team was formed in 2003. I was able to pull records from 2005 on. There were 670 hazardous materials incidents within the City of Sacramento from January 2005 until last month. The majority were flammable gas releases, propane, methane most likely, methane being natural gas, and flammable and combustible liquid releases, gasoline or diesel, could also involve alcohols. Why are these release numbers so high? Because they are the most commonly transported and stored materials that are in use today. Other hazardous toxic spills generate about 6% of those calls, refrigerant leaks 1%, and other hazardous conditions 4%. So by and far, those petroleum gases and liquids are kind of what we do every day. Where do we see these? Private residences, commercial establishments, could-be dumpsters of apartment complexes. Occupant A takes a corrosive and dumps it away in the dumpster. Occupant P takes a base, and the next thing you know, we have a reaction in a dumpster happening. And that's just one of the things that we do. We can mitigate and clean that up. So we work in cooperation with the County of Sacramento EMD. Your agreement is with them, and they contract with us, or better, sub-count contract with us, to provide mitigation identification services. So we'll sample, we'll analyze, we'll determine what defensive actions are necessary and intervene as appropriate. A big part of the responsibility is notifications. So when we talk about something dumping on the road, there are certain decision points on when we have to make notifications to the state, as well as if it goes into the environment. If it goes in a storm drain, we have to be able to trace where that storm drain goes, what it exits into, and notify those agencies. It could be Department of Fish or Wildlife, it could be Sacramento County Storm Drain, it could be the U.S. Coast Guard. So and we handle all of that through this agreement. And then we coordinate cleanup and disposal with County EMD. With that, I will take some questions, if you have them.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. It's very informative, and glad it's you, not me. You have any questions or comments? Jeff?
Just a question. So I get, you know, first of all, I'm going to support this. I get that you guys were formed 2003-ish or so. This has come to us probably the last five years as an additional cost, if you will, and I get that. But when I step back, you know, I look at the City of Citrus Heights, get eight cents out of every property tax dollar. SacMetro gets 19 cents. So you're getting more than double of us, and this becomes an additional cost to the taxpayer. Again, you guys are the only ones who do it, so I get it. But in the contract, I do have a question. I mean, I kind of look at this as insurance, right? What happens if we don't have you? You know, it could cost a lot more. But I notice on the contract, it was, you know, $59,000, and then every year through the contract, it goes up 3%. But again, kind of like insurance, you know, my insurance company offers me all sorts of incentives not to use them, if you will, but this is saying guaranteed it's going to go up 3%. I'm just curious how we arrived at that figure, as opposed to a cost-of-living adjustment, you know, that, which a lot of them are based on, that can be flexible, i.e., you know, it caps at three, but if the cost of living's at 2.2, why would I want to give you more? So that's just my question. Where do we come up with the 3% as opposed to a cost, you know, some type of metric that we can all see and then cap it at 3%?
The 3% was an estimation of the cost of the services and the training, and the equipment is increasing every year, 3%. If, after the first three years of the contract, if we decide that the cost is not going up that much, and we don't foresee the cost going up another 3% per year on the two remaining options, then we renegotiate the contract.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say thank you. This is probably the best explanation since we started paying for this service that we've gotten. So thank you, Captain, for great presentation. It helps to understand what we are paying for. And like Mr. Slowey said, we hope we don't need to use it. It doesn't sound like it's too huge, but boy, one incident could blow this whole thing out of the water.
Literally.
Literally.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions?
The only other comment I'd make is, can we get an annual report to show, you know, I mean, you were able to pull them since 2005, but I don't need to see those, but just on an annual basis, you figure for $60,000, we can get a, you know, a PowerPoint that would show, going back to last year, how many times and what the incidences were, you did have to use it in Citrus Heights.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, it would be real short and say none, you know? We get it. So thank you.
And I believe that's in the agreement. The agreement is for you to be able to have, on an annual basis, have those figures and those numbers. So we'll definitely make sure that happens.
Good. Thank you. All right. No other comments or questions? All in favor of motion?
Move approval. Second.
Move a motion in a second to approve this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It carries. Next item, please.
Next item is department report, number 14. The subject is homeless presentation regarding regional outreach efforts.
I am Officer James Garing with the Citrus Heights Police Department.
This is Sergeant James Evans, and we're both with the Special Operations Unit.
And we're here on behalf of Chief Lawrence. Our presentation to council tonight will be an update on the regional cooperation with regional partners on homelessness.
Okay. Did that one?
Excuse me. So we have had a regional partnership with a lot of the agencies, meeting specifically to talk about homelessness, and these are all of the agencies that we currently have on board, from Plastra County in Auburn, all the way down here to CHP with their POP unit, Sacramento County, and that we meet with them on a quarterly basis. A different agency will host these quarterly meetings, and then we will discuss the trends that each agency is experiencing and find out ways to work together and collaborate to hopefully overcome whatever issues we're facing. A common trend that we used to see was the term re-towning. And essentially, what this was is if somebody came across a potentially homeless person, they would pick them up and then deliver them to the next neighboring agency. And this was not a solution to solve any problems, and quite frankly, it made a lot of agencies kind of look bad. So what ended up happening at one of our meetings was mutual understanding that we are going to stop doing this, and we're going to make sure that we're going to do everything we can to provide the resources that these folks need. What's really important to note is that we have resources available in the area for people that are homeless. I'm sure you're all aware that you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink it. And when it comes to working with our homeless, we can provide them all of the resource information, but we can't force them to take it, and we can't force them to go to the shelters. So what we have to do is figure out ways to have continuous contact and then be able to find our success that way. And one of our best resources is Tony, our navigator. Now, Tony actually goes out with myself and Officer Taylor on a weekly basis. We go to targeted areas in Citrus Heights to contact the homeless. Essentially, we're bringing the resources and information to them, and then she can set up the appointments and the meetings and start bringing them into her program, and then eventually have that continuous contact. I've seen it. Sometimes it's the first contact. Sometimes it could be the 10th, 15th, maybe even the 20th contact. But it's important to note that we can't force them into these programs. All we can do is encourage them to get involved. With the continuous contact, what we have found is that a lot of our homeless have realized that not just the officers, but Tony cares about them and wants to try to get them into a better living situation. Now, we all know that being homeless is not a crime. However, there are many other things that our citizens can observe and that are criminal in nature, and they will continue to contact the police department. As officers, our patrol officers in particular, they will continue to respond and go out and make these contacts and investigate what other criminal offenses might be occurring, and then take the appropriate enforcement action as they see fit. During these checks, our patrol officers are doing a history check on the subjects that they're talking to, looking for things like probation status or parole status as well. Once the officer determines if there's a criminal offense, then they're going to move forward with whatever necessary action they need to do. But we still provide the resources. We're still giving them Tony's card. We're still giving them the street sheet with information and trying to figure out different ways to get them into the programs that's going to help get them off of the streets. The officers also know that they can tell our businesses and our residents that they can contact the POP unit, and we do something that's called Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. What we will do is we will take an overall survey and assessment of a business and help them find ways that if they're having maybe gang graffiti or other issues around their property, ways to prevent that. It's called hardening the target. We help them to fortify doors. We talk to them about proper lighting, landscaping. It's a lot of really cool, interesting stuff, and I kind of geek out on it at times, but when it's all said and done, it's something that can help make their business be more presentable and also a lot safer. So that is something that we do provide to all the businesses and residents here in Citrus Heights. Our goal has always been to enhance the quality of life. Back in 2015, we actually started our homeless outreach program and education, which is a survey. The survey runs during the month of April. It's actually running right now. In this program, our officers have a card, and while they're contacting a person, if they determine the person is, in fact, homeless, they will go through a series of survey-related questions. All of this information helps us to collect it and then turn around and give it to Tony, and then she can start contacting those folks. Because Tony is one person, but if we use a lot of our officers who know where these folks are to contact them, then we can get that information to Tony a little bit quicker. Last year, we started doing a follow-up to the survey, which was the Hi-Fi Card. It was Homeless Information Field Identification Card, just to kind of keep things going as far as continuing the contact. The outreach that we do, obviously, as POP officers, we go to our neighborhood association meetings, but we've also gone to ABBA and the SMP and give them presentations on SEP Ted and what to do if you see criminal activity or suspicious behavior. Basically, you know what's not normal in your neighborhood, and if you see something, say something, and give us a call, and we'll have officers respond out. Through that outreach, we've had our collaboration with Citrus Heights Heart, and of course, that collaboration is what helped us to have our navigator here. And finally, we have our Citrus Heights Navigator. Right now, Tony is handling a lot of clients, and she's doing a great job at finding them housing. We are the agency that had the first navigator in the region, and now we have seven navigators in the region. And the reason that's so important is there was a concern in the past that people might be crossing city lines or county lines coming over here, specifically looking for Tony to get those resources. Well, now that there's an Orange Vale Navigator, if somebody does come over, well, we can actually refer them back to the Orange Vale Navigator. And like I mentioned earlier, we do a quarterly meeting with our regional partners. Well, at that meeting, we brought all of our survey cards to kind of get a feel for if there's this migratory pattern of homelessness. And of the, it was 147 cards that we had put out for our regional partners to take a look at, there were only three names that people recognized in their jurisdictions. So what's happening, what we're seeing from these cards, is that people live here, are familiar with here, something happens, and now they're homeless, but they stay here because it's familiar to them, and then Tony does everything she can to try to get them back into some kind of better housing situation.
And then with our partnership with our regional partners, they're finding that this is true. It's about the same thing. We're getting numbers of about 70%, Plastra County and such, that their homeless have ties within that county or that city.
And so far, for our navigator this year, for the first quarter, she's already housed 30 people, helped 14 people get new IDs, 10 of them have gotten lawyer referrals, 32 bus passes were given out. She currently has 80 active clients, and she's gotten three clients into the MAETHER program, which is a 13-month job placement and living program.
That's awesome.
And at this point, we'll take any questions.
Thanks very much. I think it's safe to say that we kind of stand alone with the comprehensive approach we have to homelessness in Citrus Heights. And if, I know, we get complaints from the public, we come directly to us, they come directly to you, but all we have to do is drive to Sacramento to see what a huge difference it is here than it is there. They just have such a different standard of difficulty with the sheer volume of homelessness as they have. My question, I know April is our month where we do our count, and we're almost done with April. Do you see any trending? Are we on track to finish it by the end of the month? And you have a sense of the numbers going up or down?
Right now, it looks like the number might be similar to last year. Right now, we're at about 147. And as far as trends that we're seeing, a lot of folks are just saying that they're staying here because they either have family here, they have friends here, they grew up here, or they're familiar to the area, and that seems to be the biggest reason why they stay here.
Is the type of homelessness changing at all? Are you seeing more families and fewer just single men, or is it about the same year to year?
For us, it's been about the same year to year. We're seeing a lot of men, probably between the ages of early 20s to, you know, early 40s. There's a few women, but we haven't come across any homeless children.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody? All right. Thanks a lot. Really appreciate the report. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Next item is city manager items, and there are none. Next item is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
Do we have anything? No? All right. Well, that then ends this council meeting, and we are adjourned.